We should be live, yes.
Okay. Good evening. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Willmet Zoning Board of Appeals. Ms. Roberts, will you please call the row?
Mr. Felcom.
Here.
Ms. Norick.
Here.
Mr. Pelletson.
Here.
Chairman Schneider.
Here.
This meeting is being conducted remotely via Microsoft Teams. For those watching this video in the future, the state of Illinois is currently under the stay-at-home order issued by Governor Pritzker due to the coronavirus global pandemic. As a result, all in-person governmental meetings have been canceled. However, the Open Meetings Act now permits electronic meetings of governmental bodies like the Zoning Board of Appeals. And this evening, we're conducting our business in compliance with state law. As usual, this meeting is being broadcast live on our local cable access channel six. It is also being broadcast on the internet, on YouTube Live. And the URL for that is www.youtube.com/user/villageofwillmet/live. To participate in the meeting, you can join Microsoft Teams. Visit the village's website at www.willmet.com and find the calendar event for the zoning board meeting that you're interested in. There's a link for you to join the meeting. You will also find the meeting agenda and case reports under the calendar. Alternatively, you can view the meeting on Channel Six or on YouTube and call into the meeting, allowing you to listen and speak using your telephone. The phone number is 872-239-8225. Tonight's meeting code is 704-972-236-POUND. You may also submit your comments through YouTube Live and emails to comdev@willmet.com. A member of the village staff will read your comment to the zoning board. All comments to the Zoning Board of Appeals will be recorded in the meeting minutes as we typically do. For our meeting guests, joining by Teams, when you are not speaking, please keep your device muted to minimize disruption of the proceedings and your video turned off so that the board members can be seen. For those of you new to our proceedings, the purpose of this board is to hear evidence on applications for variances from our zoning ordinance and on applications for special use. Based upon the evidence we hear this evening, we will make a recommendation to the Village Board of Trustees as to whether the applications that come before us this evening should be granted or denied. We will vote to recommend granting or denying each application for variation based on whether the application meets the standards of review set forth in Section 5.4. F of our village ordinance. Applications for special use will be considered based upon whether the standards of review set forth in Section 5.3. E of our village ordinance are met. The Village Board of Trustees will consider the recommendations we make this evening at their next scheduled meeting on March 9. Our recommendations to the board are advisory only. The village has the final say on all applications and will make its own determination as to whether to grant or deny them. The village board is not legally bound by our recommendation. There's one small exception. If this board makes a negative recommendation with respect to an application, in order for the Village Board of Trustees to approve that application, a supermajority of five village board members must vote to approve it rather than a simple majority of four. There's another peculiarity to our proceedings that we need, you will need, we will need at least, or you will need at least four affirmative votes to approve, no matter how many board members are present. And given that this evening, as far as I can tell, there are four members, only four members present. We have a quorum, but to get an affirmative recommendation, we'll need all four of us to approve, to recommend approval. So since we don't have all of our, all the members present, there is the opportunity for the applicants that are here tonight to request a continuance to the next available date on our schedule. The next available date for any applicant who would like to request a continuance this evening is March 17. There's no penalty for asking for a continuance and no such request will be held against you when your case is eventually heard. If you wish to ask for a continuance, however, you must do so at the beginning of your presentation before making any substantive arguments as to the merits of your case. Please also be aware that if you request a continuance, there's no guarantee, obviously, as to how many board members will be present on the evening to which your case is continued. The cases we shall hear this evening will be heard in the order set forth on the published agenda. When your case is heard, please state your name and address and tell us exactly why your application meets the standards of review that are applicable to it. Each member of this board is a longtime resident of the village and has visited your property during the past week. In addition, we have received from village staff a report containing all written information that you have submitted in support of your application, as well as any other correspondence that the village has received. Accordingly, it is not necessary that you repeat what you have already stated in writing. Please just hit the high points with particular attention to why you believe that the application meets the standards of review. After the applicant has had a chance to speak, we will open the floor to others who wish to speak on the application. I will recognize each attendee to ask if you have a comment, so please wait to be called. Everyone will be permitted to have their say, but we would ask that you keep your comment as short, to the point as possible. Any comments received through the YouTube chat, team chat, or email will be read into the record at this time. After we have heard all oral presentations, I will close the evidence and the members of the board will discuss what they have heard and take a vote. Once the evidence is closed, no further testimony on the application may be offered. The only people entitled to speak during that part of the proceedings will be the members of the board. This meeting is a legal proceeding and all testimony tonight must be given under oath. If you are here and planning to testify tonight, I would ask you that you raise your right hand at this time and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that you will tell the truth in the testimony that you are about to give? If so, please say, "I do."
I do.
Ms. Roberts, will you please call the first case of the evening?
Excuse me, our first case is 2021 Z5, 517 Green Bay Road. This is a request for a special use for an office.
Applicant, please proceed. Is this a... Please state your name and proceed with your testimony.
Okay. My name is Brendan Noon and we're here for the request for Colorful Experience, which is a brand experience agency, which we provide national brands creative solutions, digital strategies, and marketing guidance. And the end-use cases for what we produce are permanent large format design for businesses like banks, retail, and even things like airport terminals or convention halls or sports arenas. A large percentage of our business, ninety or so, is mostly myself and my business partner, Chad McNeil, who's on the call as well, which deals with brokering and sourcing multiple vendors to produce an end product for an agency or direct to a client. An agency may come to us and ask for us to help source various vendors that we have relationships with in order to fulfill the needs of their client's project. And from that, the other small percentage of our business does have to deal with in-house production of some of these fabric large format printing designs. A lot of it is just done with in-house design. And this may include things like banners for cities or villages for large celebrations or campaigns, and even advertisements and things like that that might be wrapped around, let's say, CTA buses, for example. So in the essence of what we typically are doing deals with national brands at a brand activation level. So that is the main reason that our agency will use that office space and that is more or less the introduction of what our business does.
Thank you. So let me... The space that you are using, which is the... that you are renting or leasing, is the building fronting Green Bay Road, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you're using all of that, right?
Correct.
And is there still an apartment on the second floor?
I believe so, and I should correct that. We are using the 4,000 square feet on the first floor.
Okay. Now, your predecessor in this space, you do not intend to alter the configuration in any meaningful way, is that correct?
Correct.
And you have attached these interesting colored photographs of... Is that an existing space you're in or what is that?
That is the office as it exists, the way from the previous tenant had designed it and built it out.
Well, that's how it exists today.
Correct.
And you intend to just move in and use it as it is, is that...
Yes. There are a few minor exceptions, but nothing structural, where we would have office furniture in one of the rooms that will become our conference room and where there's another picture with a lot of workstations where the children, I believe, used to do work. That's just being elevated to a counter height where we intend, as we grow ourselves and staff, to work there. We will be, actually, has already been removed, the floor couch lounge area. I'm not sure what to call that. And otherwise, all of the other furniture has been removed and essentially we'll fill that in with other tables and other office equipment, computers and things like that.
And you said that you need five parking spaces. And what is the required number of parking spaces for this space?
Within the lease that's offered, there are six available parking spots behind the building. And we really do not anticipate in the first few years having any more than five staff. Beyond that, there would not really be any reason for having more than ten.
Do you have clients coming to your...
I have a question. Do clients come visit?
Not often. Most of them are existing relationships with agencies that were our national, many in Chicago, but also across the nation as well. Where meetups might happen would be in person at their offices. But if they were in town, we'd certainly welcome them, but it would be far and few between. It's not really a day-to-day visitor traffic situation.
So how many employees would you have here at any one time?
Employees at this, at this point, we probably would not have more than five. That's why we intend to have those six spaces, which would keep us off of the streets and parking and all of that.
And that includes you and your partner?
Correct.
Also note that Bob Sermon has joined us. I hope he's feeling better.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just want to know.
Yeah, sorry for the delay. I've been feeling well, so, but I'm doing well now. I'm ready to listen.
Good. Good. Any other questions for the applicant?
I'm curious, do you have another location? So this is a second location for you or will you be consolidating everything here?
Everything will be moving into this location. So this will be our headquarters. And for now, we have been working out of our homes, obviously, due to the pandemic. But at this point, this will be our location, our main location.
The user in the rear, which is the Fitness Enterprise.
Correct.
They are currently in operation, is that correct?
I believe so. We saw them when there was better weather working out there.
Very much so.
And their customers, they park where?
I'm not sure, but I know that our parking spaces are allocated along the north wall adjacent to our unit. And I'm not sure how many parking spaces they have. I think, I believe, on the southward-facing wall of the Jewels Overflow parking lot.
Yeah, no, I see at one point for that they are parking spaces 13 to 17 or a total of five against the north boundary of the property. Those are the ones you're talking about, is that correct?
Correct.
That's correct.
Any other questions for the applicant?
I joined late. I just had a question. So you currently said you'll have five employees and then what do you think you'll max out at this location?
Actually, we're at four.
Or four.
Probably have one or two more join over this, the next two years. We don't really intend on having a large overhead of employees. And, but I wouldn't see it growing beyond ten.
And then for those additional parking spaces, I guess you'll find... Well, I guess on the other side of the railroad tracks, there's always those spaces.
Sure, and many are living in this area. I plan, hopefully, in the better weather to just bike there. And there are other places that we can find space.
Okay, and I'm sorry to ask another question. I missed, since I missed it. But so you do have a customer population coming to the location or not?
No, very rarely. If anything, it would be a client here and there. I wouldn't even say monthly. It would be virtual conversations and telephone conversations with existing business partners that we, not partners, but business organizations, agencies that we already conduct business with.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Hearing none. I think, I assume, Lisa, we don't have anybody else connected that was just a copy of this case?
I don't believe we have anybody else in the meeting for this matter, no.
Okay, so I can ask for a motion?
I can make.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Yeah, I wasn't here for part of it, so it feels comfortable.
I'll move to recommend granting a request for special use for an office at 517 Green Bay Road. In accordance with the plan submitted, the zoning board must determine if special use will be on the land or the use. In this case, the use.
Thank you, a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, just a second. Any discussion, Mr. Pelletson?
Well, I mean, I think that the applicant's confidence that even when there were just four commissioners available to hear this case speaks to the sort of straightforward nature of it. It's a space that has gone through several different changes. And while I'm sure that the village would prefer retail space and, you know, especially on the ground floor level rather than office space, I think the reality is that this would remain vacant for quite some time if it was not occupied by the applicant or a similar service sort of industry. And they're not creating many changes. And really, the only aspect of this that we're being asked to discuss is whether or not an office space should be allowed on the first floor in this particular area. And I have no problem with that. So I can support it.
My knowledge of the space, I think it was on the zoning board when we approved the previous tenant in the space. And from a re, from a customer space, there was a concern previously because of the narrowness of the driveway and circulation on Green Bay. So even when it was going to be a retail location, there was a question if it would work as well as some locations. So I think an office where, being located there, would work well. I don't think it will. It's not disrupting the direction that Willmet wants to take with, you know, increasing retail in the downtown because it is kind of off the beaten path. So I can support it as an office use.
I would, I would join in that. I agree exactly with what Gregory and Bob have said. It's both, it is off this beaten path. It doesn't look like it's conducive to retail. And it has been office space and it probably is right now best used as office space.
Yeah, this is Chris. I too agree that I think office is a very appropriate use for the space. I have no issues.
But I can't add anything to what has been said and I think we can take a vote, Ms. Roberts.
Mr. Pelletson?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Felton?
Yes.
Did you say me?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. The train, yes.
Chairman Schneider. Chairman Schneider.
Yes. So this goes with a positive recommendation to the zoning board and they will hear this case on March 9. You may want to be there. And we appreciate it and good luck on your business in this.
Yeah, good luck.
Thank you very much. We're very honored for the opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts, can we go to the next case?
Our next case is 2021 Z4, 2241 Chestnut Avenue. This is a request for a 2.1-foot side yard shed setback variation and a 10-foot separation variation to permit the seasonal sitting of a shed.
Mr. Askins, please proceed.
Thank you. I appreciate all the board members' time, personal time here reviewing this case. As you can see, hopefully, from our application, we experienced some significant flooding on our property over the last 35 years that we've been in Willmet. And we respectfully request that we can locate a shed that we use. It's 13 square feet. We use it to store firewood during the winter that we put close to our back door. And then in the spring, summer months, we move it over to our side yard adjacent to our house. And that is, that's the basis for our request. There really, because of the flooding that we experience at this property, there really is no alternative place to store this shed. In the summer, there are significant rains or spring, even after the snow melt from this winter. The items that we do store in our garage, which we, which we had built to a one-and-a-half-car garage again as to not, to increase our impervious surface, that, that equipment that we have in the garage, which isn't much, the snow blower, lawnmower, those kinds of things, we have to move out of the garage because they're underwater, otherwise. So the shed really can't be stored in the garage because it's, it's a little bulky and heavy for mid-move. So we're requesting that we can locate it on the side of the house, which we've done for the last 15 years without incident. And I understand that perhaps one of the bases for our neighbor's complaint is that water is running off of that and leading to seepage in her basement, which is, in my opinion, it's got to run, all the water would have to run off that 13-square-feet, three feet to the property line and then another additional five feet over to her, over to her foundation wall for the water to be seeping in. So I just, I don't quite understand the basis for that argument. And like I said, it's been there for 15 years without incident. So that's, that's our feeling and happy to take questions from the board. Thank you.
Is there any questions for the applicant? And then I will also ask if there's anybody that was...
Hello? Hello? Hello?
Yes, please identify yourself and...
Hi, I'm Pamela Warnock. I live at 2245 Chestnut Avenue. And I'm the neighbor to the west. And I would say that everything that was represented here is natural. That's true. What I would say, though, is that in terms of looking at this, it is very close to the property line. And it is very bulky, okay? It's a bulky shed. There wasn't a bulky shed there. It's visible when we go out in the yard. There's not really houses when you look out at those. See the shed. So it's very visible. It makes the area look very crowded. It's not really active, but... In any case, just going standard, okay? Looking at the first standard, all right? The particular physical condition, shape, surroundings of the property would impose on the... You know, I don't believe that. Does everybody know that? We do get... Where the food park runs and drives. See that we do have some drainage in our area. But I think that's unusual for Willmet. We, you know, are to the west of the 241 property and the flooding that I see in their picture extends onto our yard as well. And so I, I think that in terms of the first standard, the lot and the sitting of the house, it's not particularly unusual for Willmet. Okay, there are other locations behind the house that meet the setback requirements and that, that don't infringe on the, on the setback. And I don't understand why the occupants of 2241 cannot use one of those areas. If they need to put it on a raised platform, that three or four times or two times that it rains heavily. It's not that often, but then I think that they, they certainly can do that. It's not hard. In the past, we see lots of people that have things on raised platforms like trash containers, things like that. The second one, the plate of the property owner was not created by the owner. I think that they're creating their own... I think that they're creating their own situation with use of the structure. Many of us have wood burning fireplaces. I know I do. And you know, I don't require, you know, infringing on the setback in order to store my firewood in the summer. So I think that they're creating this problem themselves. In terms of C, the difficulty or hardship is peculiar to the property in question is not generally shared by other properties classified in the same zoning district and or used for the same purposes. Again, I think that there's nothing unique about this property at twenty two forty one. And that's what I would say. D, the difficulty or hardship resulting from the application of this zoning ordinance would prevent the owner making reasonable use of the property. Clearly, that's, you know, not the case. The applicant is able to make good use of the property without the shed. And there are other places on the property with the shed to be placed. I think the point is that when the shed is placed on the west wall, they don't see a shed at all. And I think that's why it makes it so attractive to them. Whereas we do see that wall. Then the proposed variation will not impair an adequate supply of light or air. Second. Will not increase the danger of fire. Again, the shed full of firewood. You know, close to the house, I you know, I guess if it's cared for appropriately and stored appropriately, that it's not going to increase the danger of fire. However, it does alter the way that the how that the view looks when we are in our yard when we're looking out of the windows. And in addition, it does increase the seepage. This is a bulky shed with, you know, a significant surface area. There's not much room between the two houses. And anything that increases, I don't know, in in yeah. Going to increase, is going to increase the seepage. And this is not a theoretical concern. This is an actual concern. We have a big room in our basement, sitting right there and two window wells. And we have seepage through the window wells and the wall related to the drainage on this side of the house. And so I think that this playing a role or was playing a role when I asked the village to because we were having problems with seepage. And so I I think that this is impacting my house. And it is impacting when somebody looks at the area, they can see the area is very crowded in this area of the back of my house. So but again, I think that the the seepage is a real issue.
Can I can I enter in? Can I interrupt you, please? You you mentioned seepage. The applicant says for fifteen years he has done this and there's been no problem. Why are you raising that issue now?
Not true. That's not true. I can tell you that even within that time, we had to contact the village about something else that was placed in this in the area of the setback and it and had to be moved. So.
So you are you you are attributing the the location of this portable storage equipment. You're attributing that 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 because that is there, you have flooding problems. Is that what you're saying?
Making the seepage worse. Actually, is what I'm saying. I'm saying that.
Can I ask you a question, ma'am? I I I understand that and I I would appreciate if we could instead of going over the same points repeatedly, if we could try and 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 move forward to to new territory. And so one of the things I wanted to ask is how long have you lived at twenty two forty five?
I've lived here since nineteen ninety one.
Okay, so longer than the fifteen years of the shed. That's what I was interested in.
And that's true.
If the the location of the shed wouldn't seem to make any difference in terms of the the water in the backyard, the water issues in the backyard. If the shed is in the back of the house or the shed is in the side of the house, it's the same dimension and the same imperviousness. And I don't think it's on any sort of fixed foundation. Am I correct, Mr. Haskins?
That's correct.
So that there it is possible for the water to to be absorbed by the ground underneath it after it runs off.
This is not that his picture is not correct. And when I look at the setback, when it says how much it impacts on the setback, it's not, this is not true. First of all, this is close to.
I appreciate that, but that's not really, that's not the point that I was making. The point I was making is that the shed, no matter where it's located on the property, has the same effect on the water absorption or lack thereof.
That that's not the case. This is like having a gutter, all right, aimed at your house, three feet from your house. All right, so while it doesn't change the the impervious surface area, okay. It's like hit a gutter or the drainage from the top of the shed runs directly. It doesn't have a gutter that moves it to the front of the house, okay, that moves it to.
Okay, okay. We I I think we've heard, excuse me for interrupting. I'm I'm so sorry, but I think I think you've made a very good. Your points are well made and we 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 have all heard them. And if you don't mind, I'd like the applicant to respond. Mr. Haskins.
Yes, sir. I'm looking for words right now, really. This, the shed does not contribute to any kind of flooding or seepage in her house. We have the lowest, as I said, and I don't want to repeat it because you asked us not to in the in the application. We have the lowest lying property of any of our five contiguous neighbors, including the two at the corners. So we get everybody's water. I mean, it's all running downhill. And for for the complainant to make an argument that a thirteen square foot shed is contributing to seepage in her basement, I just, that makes no sense to me whatsoever. I just have trouble getting my arms around that. So. And again, the shed, if I could put it somewhere else, I I would. But that area over there is is her side yard or backyard, if you will. It's not well maintained. It's got weeds that are five to six foot high all summer long. It's it's.
Okay, I appreciate it, Mr. Haskins. Thank you for.
Can I ask you, Mr. Haskins, a question? You know, one of the things that your neighbor suggested was that you might be able to put the shed on an elevated platform of some kind or a stand and thereby keep it in the in in a location that does not require a variance. Can you tell us what your thoughts are about that possibility?
Yes, the the water in my backyard and it's not three or four times a year. It's a it's a dozen times a year where I have to pump it. It's literally a foot to a foot and a half deep behind my garage. It completely half of those times probably completely envelops my garage. So I I would have to build something behind my garage that would be a foot and a half high to put it on that. And and clearly, that would be visible to my neighbors behind me, which I I and they enjoy their backyard as opposed to this side yard that's not used at all by my neighbor to the west. So in my opinion, of of building some kind of structure for the for the shed to sit on is is not practical.
Okay, a couple more questions. You you have a a winter location for the shed. Is there an issue with it staying there if it was elevated?
The only reason it couldn't stay there really is because we do move our barbecue to that area. It's right behind our front door, our back door, rather. And we use that area for our barbecue. Again, there's really no other place to put the barbecue either because we have a large wooden deck that is, I put it on that. So it's it's really the only place that we can put it. And and to correct one thing that my neighbor said, we the 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 shed is emptied out before it is stored in the summer over on the side yard. So it does not contain any firewood. There's nothing, there's nothing in there that's combustible other other than the shed itself.
How do you move the shed? You talked about how difficult it was, but you also, you know, if it's difficult to move to the garage, how do you possibly move it around to the side of the house?
It's not easy. I I do it myself. I'm sixty five years old and I'm in pretty good shape. I'm I move it myself. If I can, if I can lasso a friend into helping me move it, I will do that. But it it is movable myself. I try to put it on a tarp and then drag drag the tarp. So it's heavy. So to store it in the garage during the summer would be difficult to move that out. I can move my snow blower and my my lawnmower and things like that that are on wheels. I can move those to higher ground to keep those out of the floodwaters. But to move that shed would be difficult.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, Mr. Haskins, a question, if I may. Your neighbor says they've lived there since nineteen ninety one. You've had this shed for fifteen years. What is the issue now? Why is it coming up now?
I I don't know, sir. Honestly, it's it's honestly, we've had this shed for fifteen years. It's been stored over in that location. The same place for fifteen years. I honestly, I I don't know the answer to that question, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant?
Yeah.
I'd just like to say that, you know, our our role of the zoning board is to look at this as if it hasn't happened yet. You know, in in certain cases, look back to say, okay, if the applicant came to us with this request, this is what the Board of Trustees asked us to do. If they came to us with this request, would we grant this request? And I think it's an interesting perspective to take, and I would approve this, given the conditions. This is the best locations. And it almost falls into a category when we have a large number of zoning cases where people have to put air conditioners on the side of their house, then condensers. And the condensers really, you know, they're fairly large. I'll bet you two condensers on a on a new home would take up at least the square footage you're talking about. And we've never addressed the issue of it being an impervious issue or a potential flood issue or any of those issues. So I don't think that that is true. And I think the thing to look at is this is a very modest home on a piece of property. If there was new construction, that would change change dramatically. Now, that shouldn't factor into our decision. But also, the homeowner has the option of building a ten by ten shed anywhere in the yard. And and that would cause more impervious area. So and I think to look at the standards review, you know, I'm taller than this shed. I walked out there today. I'm a tall guy and I'm like, how could how could this be an issue? I mean, it's really very compact and small. And it's not impacting light or ventilation or any of those things. It's very minor. And it can't be the cause of any flooding.
Mr. Falco, Mr. Falco, I wanted to make a comment.
Yeah, I just had a a question for Mr. Haskins, and that is what is stored in the shed during the summer months?
Absolutely nothing, sir. It's empty.
So theoretically, could the shed just be dragged behind the garage and laid flat on a some boards of some sort on a raised platform?
Well, to to Mr. Pelletin's point before, the the flooding back there is significant. And and I would have to, I would have to build something that I would say would be eighteen inches high, foot and a half high to to put it on that platform during the summer months. And my neighbor behind us would have a clear view of that. They they use their backyard frequently. And they would have a very, very clear view of that shed, particularly being raised eighteen inches off the ground.
Even if the shed were laid on its side or its edge?
I I suppose it could be. It 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 could be laid on its side. I I still think that they would have a pretty significant view of it, particularly from upstairs in their house, but consideration.
I thought you'd mention that you, I thought you'd mention you put the lawnmower in there in the summer because the garage floods. Did I misunderstand?
No, the the lawnmower is in there, sir, but but everything that's in there is on wheels and easily moved so that when I'm expecting significant rain, I I move everything to higher ground. I can I can easily move it and tarp it on our driveway or whatever I need to do.
I see.
But you're saying those things are in your garage and you move them out when you know there's rain coming. It's not in the storage unit.
Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Nothing's in that storage unit in the summer.
Can you, can you tell me? I I was under the impression that this storage shed was all plastic. Is that the case or is it? Can you tell us what it's made of?
It it is all plastic, sir.
So my thought about that is, would you really need to elevate it at all if you put it in the behind the garage, as Mr. Falco had suggested? Since the water is not going to do much in the way of damage to an all plastic shed?
Conceivably, yes, I I could do that. It's, again, my neighbor, I think, behind would have a clear view of that all summer. I I try to be a good neighbor. The the side yard where this is located is not used at all by my neighbor to the west at all. Their windows, as my neighbor stated, they're seldom, their their shades drawn twenty four seven, three sixty five, basically on that side of the house. So it's not something that they have to look at. It's behind our fence. There might be an inch or two that's over the top of the fence, but it's not an area of their yard that they use at all versus my neighbor behind who uses their backyard extensively on thrown wood.
Thank you, Mr. Haskins. Any other questions? If not, I think we've heard from from the neighbor to the west. And I can now close the testimony and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion. Sorry, just got to find it here. I move to recommend granting a request for a two point one side yard, two point one foot side yard setbacks shed variation and a ten 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 foot separation variation to permit the seasonal sighting of a shed at twenty one forty one Chestnut Avenue in accordance with the plans submitted.
There a second? There a second? You need a second?
I can second it.
Thank you, Mr. Falcoff.
Like I said, if, 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 if we follow, you know, our role as the zoning board is to interpret the code and to see if there are ways to minimize a particular variation. I think we explored that option. I'd be concerned about putting the, the storage container on its side. You know, some of those are hollowed out plastic walls and I don't know if they're solid. So could water get in there? I mean, it's not the intended use. I, I think the, the request, if they came, if it was a new request, it would be a, a very minor request to do this. It, it's very small. And, and I really don't see any issue with, with the storage of it on the side of the house, given the condition and the, you know, it, again, they didn't create the, the, the homeowner didn't create the situation of the flooding. I mean, it's, it's part of the site and they're trying to deal with that the best they can. So, and I, I think the impact to the neighbor to the west is minimal. So I can support maintaining the shed where it is right now.
Well, I, I have similar thoughts to, to Mr. Sermon, but I also have some other ones. And that is that, you know, there seem to be some other options that are available to Mr. Haskins. He could use the tarps to, to cover the firewood and he would have no use, no need for the shed. He could move the shed to a different location. I think the, the most compelling argument for me about the, the, the need for the shed or the, the rationale for the shed is what Mr. Sermon said earlier, but didn't repeat in his, his most recent statement. And that is that if he wanted to, he could build a, a much larger shed in the yard by right. And so while I understand that the neighbor who's, would be closest to this objects to it, the, the water issues and the safety issues and many of the other issues she brought up other than the fact that she can see this shed, don't really, don't, don't really sway me. And so I would say that the, the 13 square foot shed is far smaller than a 100 square foot shed. And that as a result, while I would urge Mr. Haskins to think about options other than putting it in the side yard, if that is the best solution and he can work it out with the neighbor, then I could see the way to support this.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I'm going to step in. I, I agree with what Riley said. It's, I, I'm a little bit troubled because there do seem to be other places that the shed could be placed. But I will say that I live just around the corner from Mr. Haskins' home. I walk my dog down that street often. I've never seen during the summer months any shed there. I was surprised that there was during the summer months a shed. So it's not something you notice certainly from the street. There is a six foot fence which blocks the view from the homeowner to the west. And when I went today to take a look at the shed, I have to admit that I did, I was shocked at how small it was. And it looked to me to be a little bit of much ado about nothing. And that's not to take away anything from the homeowner to the west, her views. But it really is not that big a shed. And the, the issues with the water, anybody who lives in Kennelworth Gardens knows that as you get close to Hunter, you're bound to have water. It was a swamp at one time and the swamp reappears during every major rain. If you live down, especially as you get close to Hunter. So I'm inclined to be in favor of the variance that's requested. It's, it's just not that big a deal. And I, I think as, as Mr. Pelletin said, if the neighbors can work it out, so much the better. But short of that, I don't have any problem with the requests that have been made.
Thank you, Mr. Falcoff. Christine?
Yeah, I tend to agree with Mr. Falcoff in terms of, you know, it's possible there are some other options on the property, but it is a very minor nominal request. It, it is a very small shed. I was just wondering why we even were hearing this in the first place because we're all moving on all sorts of things, you know, around on our property throughout the year, you know, depending on our lots. So I was, I was surprised. So I feel like I can support this request, given that I don't think it is a flooding, exacerbating flooding.
I'm kind of perplexed. Two things. One, that for 15 years, the owner to the west has lived with this unsightly situation. And now all of a sudden it becomes a problem. But that, that is, you know, you could almost argue with, you know, it's the, you know, we've done this for 15 years. What reason can you now have to object? But the, the, the other point is my recyclable and trash containers cover more area than this one, than this, than this. And my recyclable and trash containers are apparently, I've located them not with the appropriate distance from the property line. And, and this is, the point I'm trying to make, this is a, a movable thing. It's not a permanent item. It's like a trash container, a recyclable container that is moved from time to time. And it's not a permanent structure. And so I don't, I agree with Christine to some degree as to why we are dealing with this here. But we have to, so I am, I am, I call for a vote.
Okay, Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes, and this goes with a positive recommendation to the village board, Mr. Haskins, which will meet on, on March 9th.
Thank you. Thank you, Robert Roberts. I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have two more items on the agenda, right?
Yeah, I, I move to approve the meeting minutes from December 2nd, 2020.
I'll second that.
All the roll, please.
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
I also move to approve the minutes from January 6th, 2021. I don't know what, does everybody else hear that pounding? Somebody is building a home or?
That could be me. There, there, my, there's someone on my roof trying to break the ice off, but
Oh, okay, okay.
No, no problem.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't my hearing.
I'll second that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
So that I think concludes, unless there's someone out there, Ms. Roberts, that wants to speak on anything?
I don't believe so.
Say, say, Reinhardt, do we have to, after each of these cases moved to authorize the chairman to prepare the report?
We do. Thank you, thank you for, for mentioning that. We do need to do that, sorry. So let's go back and do that on the two cases. So we first do the one on Green Bay Road.
Yep, I move to authorize the chairman to repair, to prepare the report and recommendation for Zoning Board of Appeals for Case 2021Z05.
I'll second it.
Good catch.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
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 Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
So one more.
Okay, I'll do it again. Move to authorize the chairman to prepare the report and recommendation for Zoning Board of Appeals for Case Number 2021Z04.
And I'll second that.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Falcoff, for, for reminding us of that. And I think we're done with the business. So I need to, can I, can I move to adjourn?
I'll move to adjourn the meeting.
I'll second it.
Mr. Falcoff?
Yes.
Ms. Norick?
Yes.
Mr. Pelletin?
Yes.
Mr. Sermon?
Yes.
Chairman Schneider?
Yes.
All right, that concludes our meeting. Thank you guys very much. Are we going to have one in, in two weeks?